Is this video without sound?
It goes, ah, ax.
I hope you heard it from the notes, Mark.
Yeah.
Well, it's a...
Couldn't you probably send it to me?
She sent apologies.
Oh, right.
She was a bit, uh... A bit anxious. No, no, no. No, she, she last week she had to go to the lift and then this, this morning she goes, "Apologies."
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want, um...
No.
Test. Okay, I can hear that. Go. So, there are actually nine people watching right now.
Wow, we all sat in group.
Okay, so it has gone seven PM, so we'll start the meeting. Um, I will just inform everyone that the meeting is being filmed and livestreamed. Um, I don't know if members...
There's a seat here. No, 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 we have to film this growing.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
I think John can do it.
Yeah, John can do it. Don't fill any seats. Sorry, I'm going to go in there. I'm on this side.
Thank you very much.
So, can I welcome members and anyone watching from home? Um, so the first item of the agenda is apologies for absence. Uh, who are you seeing this?
Yeah, Ken Harley, Monsey Gaskell.
Thank you. Uh, item two, declaration of interests. Does anyone have a prejudicial curmudgeonly interest to declare? Nope? Okay. Item three, open forum. Um, we did receive a question. Um, as Bonnowswick is getting busier with parked vehicles, what are the council planning to do for making pedestrian and disabled access better? Council Whip.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Uh, as members of the council will know, the, um, the town council is investing, together with Pendle Council, in a series of town centre improvements. And that will involve, uh, creating, uh, better accessibility, particularly for disabled people around the town centre. Beyond that, an item on tonight's agenda is in respect of whether the town council would take over car parks from Pendle Council. So although the town council at the moment isn't responsible for off-street parking, in the future, depending on that decision, it might well be, and in which case could be, uh, uh, some responsibility for the town council to provide better facilities insofar as they can do. Um, I hope that satisfies whoever's asked that question online.
Scott Johnson.
Very good. Um, but we're more than happy to have it on an agenda for a general purposes committee, and we could consider the issue further, uh, the meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. Um, we received no further questions. Uh, so I will move on now to the minutes of the last meeting. Um, so would anyone like to move them as a correct record? Or indeed find out the mistakes, Chris?
I don't know.
Okay, we've got a second now? Okay, all those in favour?
Which would have a really commentary now. Which says the chairman of the town council now needs to sign each piece of paper twice.
Uh, item five, committee slash working group reports. Uh, we've only got one with general purposes, Council Whip.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. In moving the minutes of the, uh, general purposes committee, there are one or two things that I need to pick up, um, as a consequence of the decisions that were made at the meeting. And, uh, there'll be decisions for the, for the council to make on the back of the information. First of all, Mr. Chairman, the, um, on the environmental schemes, I'm just looking for it now. Uh, on the environmental schemes, there was the, uh, the issue of the sculpture trail. And we discussed the, um, uh, the totem installation. And there was, um, uh, an agreement to look at, um, putting cobbles around the base of the totem sculpture. And we agreed to bring the prices to this meeting so we could make a decision as to whether to go ahead with that or not. And I think Jo has, uh, some further information.
Uh, price of the work is one thousand two hundred and fifty pounds, which is for, I think we're just short of ten pounds. Uh, cobbles are about, about, technical term, two, twenty pounds. Is that adequate?
Yes, I think so. Um, previously, we've got an estimate of about, well, two to three thousand pounds for it. Um, Pendle Council very kindly, um, uh, uh, offering to do the work within their maintenance contractor. There's no charge for the work to be taken. It's just the supply and delivery of the cobbles. So it is within the budgets that we've got. And, um, it's up to this meeting to decide whether to do it or not.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, so, um, are you proposing that?
Well, if Kirsty's proposing it.
Okay, Kirsty, you're proposing that we, uh, purchase them. Uh, Mike, I think, yeah, okay. Um, all those in favour then? That is unanimous?
Um, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, the minute nineteen forty-four, a request for a memorial, memorial tree at Lecliff Park. The, uh, we need to have a, a meeting up there, oh, not a meeting, not a meeting meeting. Some of us need to have a site visit just to see exactly what is being proposed. And, uh, speaking to Keith Hickson from Pendle's Parks, um, uh, earlier today, uh, the suggested time for that is two o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty-first of January. I don't know who can make it, but obviously those who are objecting can make it. Uh, are very welcome to come along. And Chairman, if you look at the minutes, um, there's quite a bit of discussion about the works that we could do doing at Lecliff Park. So there's, um, jet washing the paths, um, uh, different work. And, um, the idea is to look at all those issues at the same time. So we're looking at the proposed memorial tree and anything else that comes on. Matter of information there. Okay. So with that, Chairman, I've moved the, the minutes. And, um, I think I've covered the items that I need to pick up. And Jo, Jo, Jo will tell me if not. Um...
I know it's not on this, but it's on G P S.
Chairman, on the environmental schemes, the, uh, previously, um, at the previous meeting, there've been a, uh, discussion about replacing the, uh, the crosses on the town bridge with pole planters like they have on the other side of the road. Uh, and we said we need to get some prices to find out how much they would cost. And the figures that, uh, Jo and I have extracted from different people would mean that they're probably about a thousand pounds apiece. Um, which, given the pressure on the budget, we don't think is affordable at the moment. You know, it's, uh, it's a nice-to-do, but perhaps it'd be nice to do it next year. Um, the work that does need carrying out is, uh, the removal of the existing crosses because of continued corrosion. And, uh, part of the budget proposal would pick up that and authorize Jo to get on and get them removed. So there's no action required in turn to...
Thank you, Council Whip. Okay, so, uh, removed, that means we approve as a correct record. Uh, would anyone second those? Thank you, Mike. Uh, so, uh, item six then, finance. Uh, to confirm approval for payments made by the town clerk to the council since the last meeting of the council and to delegate consent for payments to be made prior to the mi- next meeting of the council. So would anyone like to move that we accept the payments made? Thank you, Mike. Uh, anyone like to second that? Kirsty, uh, all those in favour? That's unanimous? Um, item seven, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty estimated outturn and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Okay, uh, Council Whip.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Probably the most important item on the agenda because this sets the, uh, the budget for the new financial year. And obviously, uh, means what we can do, what we can't do. And, uh, uh, our clerk, uh, Jo, has worked assiduously over...
Sorry, I'll be stressing that.
She's worked assiduously to make sure that, um, uh, we get the, the information which required and work out what we need to, uh, spend in different areas. Uh, as the town council know, last year, uh, we prioritized works on the, the town centre, the town square and the pavements in the, in roundabout it. And we've been working, uh, very hard to try and get a package of, of funding available so that that can go ahead. And that forms a large part of the budget. Uh, come on to that in a bit. Um, the, uh, issue with that is we, we had hoped to have work underway now, but because of putting in a bid for the high street and rootage funding, it, 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 that set us back three months and it's not possible to do the work. Um, and given that we've got events such as, um, St George's Day in April and then, uh, the Battle Square at the end of May and the beach at some point during the summer. Uh, the general view when we discussed it amongst ourselves was that we should put it back until, uh, the middle of August at the earliest and carry out the work over September, October. And that for the duration of the work, the market will move on to part of the Welsh Road Car Park. And so the, the, the budget has been built around that. And, um, uh, there's an issue that isn't in there which I just need to flag up as a, a cost that we'll have to find within the budget, but we should be able to, to accommodate that. So turning to the budget overall, um, the proposal that's on the papers in front of people, and I, I will read it out because if people are watching on the, the webcast, it won't mean anything if we don't actually go through it. Um, in the current year, we've been saving up for that town centre work. Uh, our contribution is going to be, uh, seventy-seven thousand pounds, which is seventy-five thousand pounds of, uh, new money and then two thousand pounds that we pledged several years ago, but it's never been used. And, and so our end-of-year balances are quite a bit higher than otherwise they would have been because we earmarked funding and we're going to be carrying it over at the year end. So the first part of our resolution is to know that the estimated outturn and year-end balance, uh, is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand pounds, one hundred and seventy-two. During the current year, um, we have had some exceptional costs to one or two budget heads. Uh, one of them, which is quite, quite significant, and the other one less so. But first of all, uh, there's an estimated five thousand pounds extra spending on the civic hall. And that's, well, Jo will give you details, but that's, uh, a, a couple of exceptional replacement items. So I think today, one of the Lincoln boilers gave up the ghost, which is seven hundred pounds?
No, three hundred.
Three hundred pounds, sorry. Um, and there were repairs to the boiler which had to be carried out. Uh, and the gas bills have been...
Exhausted.
Um, a lot higher than they should have been. So there's a need. The estimated expenditure at the end of the year is twenty-five thousand pounds. And we've got twenty thousand in the budget. The income is also more than we budgeted for. So there is funding coming in that covers the cost, but we do need to put it into the budget. So, um, the second part of our resolution, uh, is to fire that funding of five thousand pounds. And it's from the, uh, unspent salaries to put into that essential equipment, repairs and replacement. The last consequential, uh, item is that we've had, uh, uh, two, uh, window panes damaged at Bush shelters. Uh, it's only a hundred pounds, but we will be over budget on that one. So the proposal is, uh, again, to take a hundred pounds out of the, um, salary costs that we haven't spent and put them into the Bush shelter budget. And that should keep it even-seeing. Mentioned in the previous item that, um, we need to remove the old hanging basket poles on the town square. Um, bit of a finger in the air, but, uh, we think a thousand pounds, discussion with Jo, uh, Jo thinks a thousand pounds would be adequate to remove the, the poles, take out the old concrete and make it good. May not be a thousand pounds, could be a bit more, but, um, that, that resolution would authorize the clerk to get prices and, and get the work ordered. And then similarly, there's, um, an exceptional cost which, uh, we can fund within, uh, the budget, which is to repair the defective road surface at the beginning of the access track to the Greenfield allotments and Barlett Town Football Club Car Park. Um, the chairman took a picture there this week. And there are several potholes. And given that we're complaining about Llanelli County Council either not repairing potholes or not repairing potholes adequately, um, we thought it would be better for us to get that necessary work done to a good standard and then nobody could be pointing the figure at the town council. There's also, uh, some potholes in the, uh, Victor Park area, in the driveways, which need dealing with as well. Um, but, uh, they would be too expensive. So that part of the resolution is that we approve funding of an estimated three thousand pounds, uh, to repair that road surface. And that comes out of the park renewals budget, which is where it should come from, but Jo needs authority to, to get on, uh, uh, with that. Um, uh, resolution number five is that the draft budget, Article seven B, be approved. Um, Chairman, I'm, I'm not going to, uh, go through this line by line. It, it's quite long. The, uh, figures for anybody that's watching will be posted on the, or indeed the mayor will be there, on the town council website. They will be on the town council website as part of the, the minutes from this meeting. Um, that, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm holding it seven B. Seven.
No, that's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I was holding it seven, eh, seven B, yeah, okay. So that's the sheet paper. And, um, that totals including the seventy odd thousand pounds for the town square improvements. It's four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred pounds, which is quite a bit money. Um, I'll come back to that in a moment. Um, the res- the resolution number six here, um, going from the supply is that the allotment rents be increased by five pounds across the board. And, um, the chairman can explain what that's all about, but, um, it increases the revenue. So Chairman, it's a separate vote on the precept to the budget vote. Um, I'll go through that now when I can shut up. Um, so the resolution is that, um, the budget requirement of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, uh, six hundred pounds be met as follows. Uh, this is where the town council gets its income from. So the, the box bar, the bar that we operate at Box, we will, uh, get an estimated fifty thousand pounds in income. The civic hall, uh, thirty thousand pounds. The market on the town square, eight thousand pounds. Uh, miscellaneous parks income is three thousand pounds. Allotments, which the five pound increase, together with the existing rent, add up to five thousand pounds. Donations at events, uh, five thousand pounds. And then the proposal is to use eighty-two thousand pounds from reserves. So the, the, the funding that we'd saved up for the, the, uh, town square, uh, work, uh, will be paid for out of the money that we'd put by last year or this financial year, but last financial year, given as this budget is concerned. Um, and finally, the, the precept is set at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand pounds, six hundred. And that's, uh, about twenty-two thousand, one hundred pounds more than the current year. But that covers the additional stuff that we've taken on, um, above and beyond all, all the nice-to-do stuff. This is to pay for the, the stuff that, because we've said, right, we'll, we'll do this, that and the other. Uh, that's the extra expenditure. So the bottom bit is just formally saying that the precept be set at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred pounds. Um, so I move, Chairman, and I'll let Jo answer any questions.
I've just got a pledge later.
Kirsty?
Yeah, you talked about the seventy-five thousand pounds for the town square improvements. But my understanding is we're getting money from elsewhere for that as well? It's not just us funding it?
Yes.
Yes, so it's actually worth putting in money to get more?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I just thought it's worth mentioning and explaining.
Right. Um, we had hoped that we would get some government funding, that the money that we were putting in would trigger, um, a total of two million pounds expenditure. Now, uh, that all fell down its face because the government didn't approve our bid. Um, uh, in Con, uh, they were told that they weren't shovel-ready. Um, now, I'm not sure what excuse they would give for not approving ours because, you know, we had a scheme up and ready to go. And we were intended starting now, so you couldn't be any more shovel-ready than that. But that didn't come about. However, um, the, uh, funding that we have got, which is secure, is from Pendle Council and Jo might have the shape there with all the data.
I did have the print there, a man of power, didn't you know?
But so it, it's, it's just a tad over, uh, two hundred thousand pounds. And we've also got a bid into the county council so that we can do more pavement renewals and perhaps, uh, replace the streetlights, which, uh, they can, as I say, uh, are getting to the end of their life. But that's up in the air. So there's money that we're putting in. Uh, there's actually, uh, the equivalent amount and another fifty thousand pounds on top from Pendle Council. And that's, that's solid, I mean, um, uh, so that, that might attract some county council money.
Talk spend was about two hundred and two, wasn't it? Maybe took it out somewhere to clear it. I'll have to take it back out then.
Okay. Um, so we've got a motion, uh, from Council Whip on, uh, first of all, uh, the budget. You know, resolution one to six, uh, because it needs a separate vote, so they pass.
I think they passed it. It's, it's the seven eighty C that I need, so I've got things on.
Right, okay.
Uh, it is to note the estimated outturn.
Yep, so, um, you're moving forward. Uh, so have we got a second, uh, to note the estimated outturn?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, all those in favour? That is unanimous. Uh, so seven B, uh, Council Whip has, uh, moved the budget.
Yeah, it's a result of a group, agree to agree the draft budget, but it's at four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred.
Okay.
It's dead to the party, you need a second now.
Yes, uh, all those in favour? That is unanimous. Um, seven C, allotment rents.
What's the number?
Chris?
Five pounds.
On how much is that?
Uh, the, sorry, the current year, they are paying thirty-five with a water inside or forty-three if they do. So it's still, it's...
It wasn't like five pounds, they're paying with the...
And we haven't. And we haven't.
They 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 had a five pound increase last year, the year before it stayed the same and the year before that they had a three pound increase. So it's still, I've done some research, it's still significantly lower than what they had.
Okay, so got mover and a second for the allotment rent increases, so all those in favour please. That is unanimous.
Chairman, you need to go back to the the resolutions about if the existing year authorising the clerk to via funding.
You do accept that.
So resolutions two, three and four.
All right, okay, I thought I thought I'd done under under B, which is, you know, obvious.
No.
No, okay, we've got a second for the two, three, four. Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Chairman, just in respect of the precept, the the increase of twenty two thousand one hundred pounds, that's roughly equivalent to a typical Barnoldswick band A property of less than a penny a week. So, you know, twenty two thousand one hundred pounds is a lot of money. Shared out, it is a very small amount, so it's not like, you know, a little bit on bit on bit is not nice, but it is only about that penny a week.
I wrote that, it was less than, just under point zero eight percent increase.
Eh, I think it's ten point five.
Point zero seven five.
No, seven point five.
Seven point five percent increase.
No, I think Kirsty's up on the whole council tax.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Oh, so it's not household, it's about something like that.
Yeah.
I think mine was seventy P a month.
Chairman, I mean, just on the council tax overall, the bulk of the council tax goes to the county council and their increase is likely to swamp the entirety of the money that the town council gets from the precept. And so of the whole lot, maybe four P the pound is paid to the town council, but don't owe me to that because it's, you know, it's a moving piece.
I was just meaning of looking at what we charge extra for a precept based on what we got last year, it was probably less than inflation, that's what I was thinking of as a reasonable, yeah, and a discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, the proposal for the precept in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty one is that out is moved by councillor David Whip. Do we have a second up? Thank you councillor Mike Pearce. All those in favour now, please show. That is unanimous, thank you very much.
Again, we should have a running comment, the chairman of the town council is now signing the precept requisition form.
Okay, isolate on the agenda is grant applications, so eight A, to consider an application from West Draven Ory's juniors for one thousand pounds in order to provide free rugby training to children in Barnoldswick. The funds will be used for safeguarding and coaching courses, first aid kits, et cetera.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep, yeah, okay, so Kirsty, I think you, are you moving to?
Yeah.
Yeah? Joe the second, okay. All those in favour? Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you.
We're coming now, forty children attending birthday and the Christmas party against seventy children, so some are on a ad hoc basis and they are training months.
My son's already with John, so it wouldn't be late that they do offer free.
So, item eight B, to consider an application from Pendle Triathlon Club for one thousand five hundred pounds for the hire of West Draven Sports Centre for the annual triathlon, councillor David Whip.
Thank you, chairman. I mean, the Pendle Triathlon is a great event, it does attract some people to Barnoldswick. Last year, the town council agreed to put seven hundred and fifty pounds into the event and to underwrite a further seven hundred and fifty pounds if the triathlon club didn't get other income. I think we were a little bit disappointed that the club came back and called in the underwriting. We're not aware that they went to other parish town councils in Pendle or indeed in West Draven, which may or may not have helped put their their funding gap. Or indeed, they didn't generate more income, which they could have done. So, it is with some regret that I propose that we don't say to this request. If they'd have just taken seven hundred and fifty pounds last year and come again and said, well, can we have a seven hundred and fifty pounds this year? I think I'd have had a different attitude, but I don't mean it in a disrespectful way, but I think, you know, last year they took one at eight nil, and so we haven't got an eight nil to give them this year. So, I move that we decline the request on the basis that they didn't achieve adequate income generation from other sources last year.
I think we should give them a minute. I think it's a great thing for the town, hundred and fifty people taking part and money going back into the sports centre in the town, the business in the town. Doesn't it do quite a lot for home technology as well, sort of promoting them to business? I think, I thought it was a really good grant.
Is there any of it at all that last year they went out and attempted to even get any money on top of the seven hundred and fifty pounds given? That you know, anyone?
No.
Was it then you suggested you and Dubai had seven fifty or did they ask for fifteen hundred and that was for the other?
We suggested they went on to town and parish councils up.
It can be hard to raise money, I think we should pay them.
We've underspent them once.
How many?
More, I think, yeah. Something else to me.
Okay, Jane?
Um, can we not get back to them and just have to put something in for the, can we not give them that seven hundred and, can we not like, give them what we did last year, seven hundred and fifty and make some, you know, some partial, um, we give them fifteen hundred, shall we say?
Would you like to propose that as an amendment to councillor Whip's motion?
I just wonder what everybody else is feeling about it, I saw, we gave them something last year, yes, they came back for more, but, you know, is it something?
Yeah, what if we wait for a compromise?
Oh, I know, I stay, can we just let people speak in turn, please? Mike?
Last year, the seven hundred and fifty pounds on the proposal that they would look for other sources for the extra seven hundred and fifty pounds. As we know, they may not have done, but they've come back to us for the the extra seven hundred and fifty pounds recovered for the costs. Now they come back for this year, the fifteen hundred pounds.
Are we gonna do exactly the same again?
Why should we have to give it to them?
You don't have to, we did the bid, don't we, and then it's likely to be the good one.
But, they are, and the people that take part pay for the privilege of taking part in that event. So obviously, there's there's money coming in.
We've shown that here, it's five thousand pounds, they bring in about three A, they're asking us for the gap.
There you go.
Okay, so, why, why do we, like, like last time, make it halfway, but be more strong in the suggestion that they do get like a match funding process going on to say that they get hours on the basis that they put some to themselves?
It'd be important, I was gonna suggest it, sorry.
If you can turn, indicate if you want to.
Oh, okay, again.
We can specify and say that they don't get the seven fifty upfront, so unless they come to us saying that they've already got some other amendment, you know, so instead of just doing, oh, we'll give you some, but we'll top it up, we'll say, come to us with so much and we'll make it look the best. Then it gives them a chance to secure that in advance, all right?
What did you say, sorry, sorry, John, just that bit, I was trying to find the figure.
Well, I haven't really suggested the figure, but I mean, if you wanted to, you could say, make sure that they come to us with five hundred pounds secured somewhere else, we could give them a thousand.
Got more, haven't we?
Sorry?
They've got more.
Well, if they want to commit that, or if they want to present us with that money, but if they want, if they want us to make a donation, then shows that they're putting something to help, tell them what they want.
Kirsty?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, why don't we give the compromise, I think it's got the plan together, how are we gonna raise it?
So can you say that again, John's talking?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, why don't we just ask them, say, right, give us a plan of how you're gonna raise this gap and then we'll give you this amount, so actually make them put it in writing as part of the grant. And then they've got to have shown that there's a plan, even if it's quite a simple one, and then we can approve or disapprove on that basis. So compromising that way to say, look, show us what you're thinking of doing to raise semester plans, rather than just a loop of, I guess, we've already got the money.
So, chair?
Yeah, but that's not it here though, you know, that's not what we're just, no, is it?
We asked them last year specifically, we asked all the town and parish councils and asked for the money, it's Pendle Triathlon and there's not one other application being put in according to the.
So you mean like AVI as well?
Yeah, so it covers, it's Pendle Triathlon, so it covers Colman Nelson.
I know, but we wouldn't fund something that was Pendle, but that's in the Colman, right?
Yeah.
Would we?
Yeah.
Okay, because I must do anything about that.
The triathlon does go through AVI, and so if if they're not getting funds from AVI as well, then how is it reasonable to expect Barnoldswick to pay the full amount for this, for the event fund?
I don't know, I was just saying, I thought it was a good day to convince that was in front of us, I thought it was a good use of money.
Right, councillor Whip?
Chairman, you may be getting into some difficulty with, that's been moved and that's been suggested, that's been suggested. I mean, I I I could seek to try and get a consensus, but I suspect there's some hard noses in the room that, you know, were bitten last year and not prepared to be bitten twice. And there are other people who, you know, on a scale, would, you know, move to giving them further funding. I just wanted to point something further out. I mean, presumably, my proposal was the original resolution, I think it was seconded over there, and then Jane proposed a a an amendment, or she she asked about the mention of actually forming a movement. So, you know, clearly there's gonna be an amendment of some sort, and that needs to be put on the table. The thing that I want to point out is that item thirteen on our agenda is about the free swimming initiative. Now, without prejudging the decision on that, what we did last year is that we funded that out of the grant spot. So, in the budget figures, we've assumed that the entirety of the grant spot will be utilised. And when it got to that bit, I was gonna suggest that we actually used the unspent money to go to the West Draven Sports Centre for the free swimming initiative. So, to some extent, to some extent, if we use the funding for the triathlon, we will have less available for the free swimming initiative.
Okay, well, back to this grant.
Three three nine two is Kirsty.
We have.
What are they? We're doing some fun, I'm seven, you can't write it.
No.
We have a motion on the table, it's it's been moved, but it hasn't been seconded. We'll second that, okay. So, before we take this motion to refuse this grant, would anyone like to propose any amendments? Now, you can't change the substantive, substantive action of the motion, so you couldn't say you have an amendment to approve it, but you can. Can you? I suppose, okay, right, okay, you can apparently.
I was, I proposed that we approve it based on the compromised position, where they showed a plan to raise at least some of the funds. So, I'd go for the five hundred.
So.
So we offered them a thousand pounds on the basis that they showed a plan to raise the five hundred. Remember why you've described it, whoever it may be.
So, you you offered them five hundred pounds?
So I offered them a thousand, if the third, as long as they showed a plan where they would raise the other five hundred.
So, how would we decide if that plan was sufficient?
Can we delegate that to the park?
I suppose we can. If the clerk makes a decision that isn't very representative of the council, she might be in for some flak there though.
We have a thousand pounds, we've only got eight hundred and fifty eight. Maybe you approve something later in the agenda, so you've gotta choose, I hope that's my budget.
So there's no budget for it, we're saying, right.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that, we've got seven thousand pounds on spent.
We've spent some.
That's an issue on that actually.
Although this is this year, we're still in this year.
Yeah, that's, but whereas, it says it's seven.
Football club have had some, and somebody else has, but we've already spent one thousand seven hundred and fifty. It's on item six.
This is in the twenty nineteen budget, right?
Yes. The one that's got all the colour on to now, yeah, I know, just on this, it wasn't on, that's all. Right, yeah, three thousand, okay, right, sorry, let me see.
John, it's the event's in May, so that, not, no, actually it's.
No.
They've applied for it now.
It's all filed with them this year, it's all this one, okay. Well, Mike Pearce, can I, to Kirsty's proposal, that we offer them eight hundred and fifty on the basis that they're in with six hundred and fifty pounds of.
Okay, so that wasn't what Kirsty originally said, so Kirsty, are you happy to accept that as a change to your amendment? Okay, so.
We've got eight hundred and fifty eight, let's offer them.
Okay, so, the amendment to the motion is that we offer them eight hundred and fifty eight. Okay, so we're taking the vote on Kirsty's motion now.
Okay.
Okay, so it's moved, of course, yeah, okay, so, all those in favour of Kirsty's amendment to the main motion, so, now.
Well. Four in favour and I'm no.
And then how many against, please?
Six against.
Okay, so, that amendment has failed, we now move back to the main motion, which is to deny the grant.
Are there any further amendments?
No? Okay, so I'll go to the vote on this, all those in favour of denying the grant's application, please show. All those against? Three, I'm upstaged. So, I think that is now, or no, that is now denied. Moving on now to item nine, we have to report the theft of town council property.
We're gonna any try to, I'm running behind you. Um, it was discovered on, I think, slip chart, um, that the, um, Frank Street store had had the door broken into, and subsequently it's been identified that the street, you know, vacuumed in that way, we have, it's like a wheeling bit, but it's not really, that's been stolen. And then, um, when they went to take some things down at, what were they?
At the globes, putting the globes.
When they were putting the globes up, um, it was identified that the, um, flood container that we own near the tape had also been entered, and three generators and two dirty water pumps had been stolen, the police are dealing with it.
Okay, um. We, we.
I think we're noting it, um.
I think, yeah, we're noting this, and I don't think it's proper to notice this stuff.
We also need to note, we need to come off the asset register.
Uh, yeah, so, are we all happy with noting that they're coming off the asset register?
No, I'm not happy at all.
No?
No, no.
We've been told.
Okay. Um, item ten, uh, community asset transfer from Pendle Borough Council, uh, so this is to consider requesting transfer of car parks at Rainhold Road, North Avenue, Brook Street, West Coast Road, and Worms Gate.
Were we just asking for it?
So, chairman, what's the cost, the, the implications to Barnoldswick, how much?
Um, councillor Whit.
Chairman, I don't think we know that, and I think we need to, um, meet with Pendle to understand the implications. Uh, I know Pendle Council has a budget for the car parks, uh, what it doesn't have is, um, uh, uh, regular funding for major work, and so, for instance, uh, the Rainhold Road car park, they've just replaced all the, uh, the floodlights, and that was necessary, I think eight out of ten floodlights were out, um, eight out of ten lights. And, um, the, uh, my understanding is, I don't, I'm not privy to the detail, is that, um, replacing those cleared out the, the Pendle Council budget. Um, I, I think we need to understand what the, um, such as resurfacing, uh, would cost. Um, I have got Pendle engineers to work out some estimates for the Rainhold Road run, uh, which are, um, over twenty thousand pounds. Now, the advice there is that it won't need doing for another ten years, but, um, ten years down the line, the town council would have to pick up the tab to those. Um, uh, similarly, uh, West Coast Road, which has been used recently for a compound for the, the culvert work, um, yourself and myself, chairman, have been pressing Pendle to, um, uh, fund the resurfacing at the lorry park from the culvert job, but I don't think there's sufficient money left in the culvert job to, to achieve that, so there might be some repair work done, but, uh, again, ultimately, it's gonna need a lot of money spending on it to, 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 to keep it going. So, chairman, I, I think we need to understand what the long-term costs are, as well as the, uh, year, uh, yearly costs of, you know, electric consumption, uh, whatever they may be, you know, general day-to-day repairs. Um, so my suggestion would be, in answer to Mike, uh, Mike's question, is that we seek a meeting, um, and a, as part of the assessment of the asset transfer, uh, we look at the long-term implications, um, so, you know, we could say, right, well, fair enough. I, I think the positive thing, chairman, uh, in favour of transfer, is that, uh, clearly there are a lot of discussions going on at a high level in respect of creating a unitary authority covering, uh, Barnoldswick as well as, uh, other places, and if that happens, uh, effectively we'll lose control of the, the, the car parks, what happens on the car park. Would a unitary authority that charges for parking in Blackburn and Burnley, you know, versus everywhere else, look at Barnoldswick and say, oh, hang on a minute, you, you don't charge for your car parks? Uh, we need to put that right, don't we? And Little or Barley could have no power whatsoever to prevent that from happening. So, um, there are some pretty good reasons why we might take them on, even if it does cost more money, but I think we need to understand what those costs are. So that's my, um, suggestion, that we seek a meeting with Pendle to discuss these possible community asset transfers, and the things that we've asked for, for previously, um, and we request, um, some decent estimates about, you know, twenty-five year, um, uh, uh, costs, um, so that we can factor in those lumpia items that only happen once every twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay, so we have a, a motion on the table, um.
John, could I just ask my, my lounge road catalog, is there even a list for that? Is there really a queue, or is there anything else?
What's that?
It's on the call card.
Cool, oh, that is on management, oh.
Was it Colton Mills?
It's Colton Mills, I think, was that in Brooks?
No, it is.
No, it's, it's missing off the list. Um.
So it is.
Yeah.
Well, well, chairman, now.
You know what, then, say, tell them.
Oh, chairman, can I, uh, amend my proposal then, thank you, thanks, Rose Parker, um, uh, to include the well-chaled one in it as well?
It says in the, so, the Rainhold Road, no, it's saying it's subject to at least the quality.
Um. The, the, the well-out road car park is.
It's Rainhold, right?
Right, well, the well-out road car park is, um, there's a, there's a, uh, I can't remember if it's a ninety-nine year lease or a nine-hundred and ninety-nine year lease.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Well, this is.
No, this is Rainhold Road.
And it says in that description that it has a hundred and twenty-five year lease to the Colcar Park as well as.
To the Colcar.
To, to, to.
It's the Rainhold Road.
This is Rainhold, it says forty-eight spaces, subject to at least the car for a hundred and twenty-five years from nineteen eighty-eight.
So forty-eight spaces in his Rainhold Road, but not, not well-chaled.
I think I just looked it in, see what was said.
Okay, now, this is, we, we can discuss this at the meeting.
Yeah, I can. Include, yeah, that's in the motion.
Um, okay, uh, so we do have a motion, uh, would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favour, please show.
Anyone who wants to get that meeting, should just email one of that day.
Yes, yes.
That is unanimous, um. Uh, item eleven, uh, to consider a request to cite a catering van at Letcliffe Park. Uh, do have email correspondence, uh, about it. So.
Can I ask the, the chairman, what sort of catering, is it mobile catering?
Mobile, yeah.
It is mobile. Um, would it be advantageous as well to have that in both Letcliffe and Victory Park? Uh, specifically Victory Park on Sundays with football matches that go on, there are a lot of people coming into town on Sundays with, uh, practically nothing down at Victory Park. So if it's mobile, Letcliffe and Victory Park, the idea.
Okay, um, the request is just for Letcliffe.
I don't think she said any, you look further out.
The case found at Letcliffe Park.
I think, I, that's the question.
Letcliffe. Um, okay, well, the request is only for Letcliffe, but, um, if we're in the mind, um, to allow it for Victory Park as well, we can include that and offer it to them on Sundays.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, Jordi.
What sort of food would they provi- be providing? And more sort of recyclable and things like that, what sort of trays would they use to be serving, and plastic forks and other sorts of things?
Um, it.
That's a question. That's.
It doesn't say, but I'm sure you can, you can email Kirsty, who's the requesting.
Kirsty.
Not, I don't know if we can say that.
Uh, we, we can't say it in GDPR.
Oh. Ask her, of course.
I'll email and ask it.
Okay. Uh, well, David and then Jane.
Um, chairman, I think that we need to take this in steps, in stages, um, first of all, the town council needs to decide whether we want catering vans in the parks. Um, I think currently, the, um, bylaws of the rules and regulations probably say that they can't come into the park unless we give up express consent, and, and, and as it in a guess here. Um, and then I think if, if we're comfortable with having the catering vans in the park, we should then bring it out to tender, and we should say, you know, picking on what Jordi was saying, can you explain, you know, your sustainability policies, if that a bit pos for a burger van? Um, but, you know, you know, will they be using polystyrene trays which aren't very environmentally friendly, and they're even less environmentally friendly if they're left strewn all over the park? So, I, you know, I think we need to put some rules around it, and I, I realise that's a lot more work than just saying, oh, yeah, go and let that van come on. Um, somebody's obviously had a, a, the initiative to, uh, to ask about this, but, uh, there will no doubt be a hundred and one other catering vans who will come to us in the future and say, well, how come you let them on? Uh, you know, why didn't we have a, a, a fare due, uh, I mean, the, the, the trade sort of thing? And then, you know, in terms of, uh, the, the operation, are, are, you know, are they proposing to pay any money over to, to the town council for the privilege? And, uh, how much? So, my view is, make a decision, i- you know, do we, do we want those catering vans on? What are the circumstances that, for instance, we have an event on the park, uh, we actually get an income from catering vans for their attendance at that event? Uh, they'll have a catering van that comes with the fair, they'll have a catering van that comes with the circus or circuses, um, you know, and in the money that they pay us, they'll assume they've got some exclusivity with the, the catering, so would our rules be, well, yes, you can come on normal match days down at Victory Park, but if we've got a different event on, or if there's a fairground or whatever, um, that's excluded, I think we need to think that through.
I'm more concerned about the rubbish.
I'm sorry.
I'm more concerned about the rubbish.
Well, yeah, we could, we could have rules about, you know, they, they're, they're required to remove any of the, I mean, certainly, fairground comes, and the park is cleaner when the fairground leaves than when they arrive, so, you know, they do a good job, but we need to make sure everybody else did the same.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Jane?
So, I just wanna point to you about, you know, what sort of monetary benefit really would the town council get out of it? Um, that was, Michael, that I take on what, on board what David's been saying about all the, the other things, you know, it's how many people are going to clamour and, you know, to, to get one now, so, yeah.
Okay, um. So I think from what councillor David Whit said, um, we need to have further discussion about this, um.
So, surely we can agree to, um, have, say, there's a council, we, we do, or do not want somebody on the parks, and then we can have further discussion about what that should be and how that should work.
Me.
Um, chairman, second in what Mike Whittingham's just said, um, the sensible thing to do would be defer it to general purposes, um, you know, in between now and the next meet, that meeting, uh, people can next and enquiries, you know, find out what, what it is. There's a further thing in terms of Victory Park, and that's the presence of the pavilion, and, and do know that warriors in the past have provided, uh, like, baker butties and the like. Uh, I'm not quite sure if we do that at the moment, but obviously there is a, a room there that could be used as a, a park cafe, and I know that there has been interest, uh, in, you know, from private, uh, you know, businesses in actually operating that. So in Victory Park, that might be an alternative to the food van, and so it gets even more complex.
Okay, Mike, are you happy to add in what councillor Whit suggested?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, so the motion is to.
Do we want them on, do you want them on?
Agree, well, generally, yes or no question.
Agree with the likes of the vote. Yeah.
Are you, are you saying agreeing principle, or?
In, in principle, we'd like, um, to have food outlets on the park.
Okay, and then, um, in the case of yes, we can defer it to GP for further discussion there.
For, yeah.
Okay, um, so we have a mover, and a second, uh, all those in favour, please show. Uh, all those against?
Against having a principle, is that, is that what we're against, or defer it?
Yeah, 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 I'm sure I want it.
In principle.
Okay, um, so there was, there was two against for having it, for that, for that motion, um, but that did, that did pass. Um, so that it's got the agenda for the general purposes, um.
So what would you like me to ask the question, do you want me to find out if any other parks do it, and then you know, income you get from it, or?
Well, we can discuss this, I reckon.
Okay, okay.
Um, okay, uh, so item twelve, uh, skate ramp at Victory Park, uh, to consider replacing the skate pa- the skate ramp that was removed due to being damaged slash worn out at Victory Park. Pendle Borough Council have received a quote for a replacement ramp, and this is three thousand seven hundred pounds plus VAT. This is within the current year's budget for repairs and renewals of park equipments. Mike?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, uh, Kirsty?
Second.
Okay. Jane?
Just one more thing, is it a like-for-like, is it, we are replacing it with something, uh, we're going in.
Yeah, exactly, the same sort of there, and I've done some research, because I thought it seemed like an awful lot of money, it's not.
Oh. It's not, no.
It's always busy, it's always people, I work.
Yeah.
So a mover and a second, uh, um, to say yes, uh, all those in favour, please show. Okay, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Um, moving on to item thirteen, Pendle Leisure Trust Free Swimming Initiative twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, to recen- consider a request from Pendle Leisure Trust to provide funding for free school holidays swimming for children who attend Barnoldswick Primary Schools and children who reside in Barnoldswick. The cost of this is three thousand three hundred and ninety-one pounds and seventy-five pence. Councillor Whit?
Thank you, chairman, just a bit of background on this, uh, a few years ago, can't remember how many, the, uh, well, if I go back long enough, Pendle Council used to fund, uh, free swimming for under certain age groups, uh, but that was abolished quite a long time ago. They, uh, probably twelve years since, something like that, um, more recently, in twenty, oh my goodness, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, the county council funded free swimming.
Four years.
And, four years ago, is it? And, uh, uh, virtually all the, um, primary schools in Pendle got that, but the funding came from Langisham County Council. Uh, unfortunately, following the county council elections, that funding wasn't replaced, and Pendle Leisure Trust, uh, cast about to, to see if they could continue the, uh, free school swimming scheme uh, during school holidays, uh, by raising the funds from parish and town councils. councils. And, uh, last year, Barnoldswick Town Council did agree to do it, I think at this equivalent meeting, and we, uh, funded it from the grants pot, which had sufficient money, uh, in it to do so. Uh, my suggestion, Chairman, would be that we do that again. Um, the, the unspent monies within the, uh, the grants and donations, we fund this. I think it's a bit invidious, um, if any particular area doesn't participate because children from other schools could be coming and using the, the sports centre, um, and, uh, children from Barnoldswick are not. I, I think it was far better when the county council was funding it because it was across the board, nobody missed out. Um, I think, Chairman, in, in, indirectly, it's helping to fund the sports centre. Um, when you divide the number of beneficiaries by the funding that's put in, you might say, well, that's quite a bit, but, um, nevertheless, I think it's worth doing. I certainly got the county council to do it, however many years ago it was, and I think it's, it's worthwhile.
It works out at three pounds seventy eight per child.
That's, that's three pounds seventy eight per child who use the, the facility rather than the number of children who are eligible to use it.
No, no.
All right, put me out, I'm sorry.
It's three seventy eight per child for four year of, of the children that we're gonna give.
Whether they use it or not is a...
I think we need to ask the question, let's have that home educated children and how we can make sure they, they, they receive it, because that was a question that came up at this point, so.
Chairman, I've always been perfectly clear. Uh, any children who are home educated, if they live within Barnoldswick, um, are eligible for, um, the, the free swimming and all they have to do is rock up at the sports centre, uh, the parents, uh, and demonstrate that the children are resident in Barnley and Bob's your uncle, um, and they get a voucher there.
Thank you for seconding that. Uh, so we'll take that to the vote and that's anyone else wants to speak? Okay, all those in favour then, please show. That is unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item fourteen, uh, hanging baskets and grass cutting contract, to consider renewal of existing contracts for hanging basket provision, planting and maintenance of soft landscaping, watering and roadside grass cutting. So the current contract is with Mark Bell.
Hanging baskets, yeah.
Oh, hanging baskets, alright.
Provision.
Um, Chairman, as you were saying, the, uh, part of these contracts are with a, a, a local contractor that's done them, uh, for a few years and the provision of the hanging baskets is provided by, uh, one of the local, uh, garden centres. Um, Chairman, the town council has, uh, been, um, uh, very satisfied with the services of both providers and, um, the quality of the, 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 the work or the, 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 uh, the goods that have been provided has been, um, uh, excellent. And I think people have used that word excellent in, in previously. So what I'd like to propose is that we suspend our standing order, our financial regulations in respect of, uh, these contracts and that we, uh, award the, um, the contracts to the current providers. Um, there's different bits in here, but, um, there are just two contractors and that, uh, the contracts are awarded on the basis of, uh, the prices that we, that provided, uh, last year.
Okay, for people who don't understand, uh, the standing order is that this should go, really go out to tender?
Every now and again.
Every now and again. Uh, so that's what's been suspended there.
Do we have a particular level and is it under that?
Um, there's a requirement if, uh, a, uh, work, uh, provision of a service or i- is over five thousand pounds, uh, we need to go to tender. Um, I don't think any of this work is at that level. Um, so it's below, um, uh, you, you, but the auditor would say we should test the market, um, uh, periodically to see whether we're getting good value. Um, the view of the town council in previous years has been, well, we're very satisfied, uh, with the quality, we're very satisfied with the value, uh, we don't want to upset the apple cart by putting it out to tender and then ended up with, um, a load of rubbish.
Grass cutting contracts have gone up in price since I started six years ago. Also, shall we, we should be doing that, shouldn't we? That's me, so it's, it's a good reason to continue.
Okay, uh, so we...
I moved it.
He's moved it. Kirsty, yeah, okay, Kirsty has seconded it. Um, show of hands, all those in favour? That is unanimous, thank you. Um, item fifteen is green screening, uh, to consider participating in a project to provide green screening at schools in Barnoldswick. So this is something that councillor Ken Hartsley, who is not here tonight, has been sort of spearheading in, in his role as mayor. Um, unfortunately he's not here tonight, uh, I think he's doing mayoral duties, isn't he?
He's got meetings about it, I think, in common.
Right. Um, he'd, he'd be able to tell us more. Uh, Jen, do you know anything?
I, I can probably give you a little bit of background on this, actually. Um, I was researching it just before I came out and it seems that Lambeth Council have already put this into practice. Um, and what it really is there to do is to protect children and playgrounds from pollutants in the air. So if you've got, um, sort of, a long section of railings alongside of the playground, okay, uh, and you've got a road, a busy road running alongside, you're getting all the toxins and the pollutants from the traffic. And what this green screening is to do is to try and put a barrier between the pollutants and the children in the playground. Um, and it's, oops, it's with the sort of, um, environmental climate change and everything going on, that, that this is something that's, um, becoming a, a little bit more prominent. Um, and I think some schools, in, for, for example, Gisborne Road School lend itself quite well to it, um, because of, just with the length of rails and everything.
I think we should clarify, by a barrier, it's, it's plants.
It's plants, it's green, it's actually green plants that will absorb this from the, from the, uh, atmosphere.
St Joseph's, pretty much, they are surrounded by a hedge. Gisborne Road, the regis speaks about it a bit because it's obviously a retaining wall on the side of the road.
Uh, I believe that the, um, retaining boxes, that's what, yeah, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be planted in the ground or such.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Pearce? Councillor?
I wasn't putting me hand book to say I'm paying for it. Um, uh, Chairman, uh, uh, Ken, the mayor, uh, uh, emailed some information through which, uh, uh, I, 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 don't press me on this because I, I only know what I'm doing Italian now. Um, Ken has been, as mayor, has been, uh, looking at how this could be implemented in Pendle as a whole and he has got some, uh, interest from Burnley, uh, Pendle and Rosendale CVS, um, who are interested in doing it. There's a pot of money, um, through the Health and Wellbeing Partnership Board, which Ken sits on, for social prescribing. Um, now, if I get any of this slightly wrong, I'm sorry about that. Uh, my understanding is, from the correspondence that Ken, uh, forwarded to me, that there is a willingness for those, um, bodies, it's clinical commissioning group money in the first sentence, to fund this sort of project. Just what sort of project it is and, you know, how extensive it is, is it the whole of Pendle, is it just a bit or is it a series of bits all put together? I, I, I really don't know. Um, but what I've seen, I'm persuaded that there is funding available for it. Um, Chairman, I can also report that this same issue was discussed this afternoon by Barnoldswick in Bloom and their position is that, um, they're willing to, uh, support the initiative, um, but stress that there's a limit to what they can do. So it, it might be limited to providing, um, some advice rather than necessarily be hands-on. I, I think the, the concept is if it's provided by, if it's funded by the CCG, that, um, you know, it would involve different sections of the community, uh, helping to put the provision in place, uh, you know, making the planters, um, you know, actually getting them going, anything like that. And that, um, it may be that, um, GPs could include this within a, a, um, a fitness on prescription type activity which would, you know, get people who perhaps, um, overweight or, um, uh, you know, have other ailments. I wasn't quite in the theatre there. No, 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 no. I couldn't possibly comment. So, um, yeah, so there is funding available. Uh, the means by which you'd sort of access that funding is a bit up in the air and I'm not privy to how far the discussion has gone on that. Um, I think, um, in addition to what I said, the, the mayor's office has contacted two schools, Gisborne Road and St Joseph's, because there is a bit of fence at St Joseph's between the garage and the school, so that would be suitable. And it also happens that those two schools have, uh, two of the staff, either a teaching assistant or, um, a teacher, who are quite keen on horticultural initiatives, so it's just sort of fitting together there. Um, I, I would very much like the town council to sign up to it and say, we'll support it, um, and then ask the question, well, you know, um, uh, how is it going to happen and what involvement would you wish?
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It wasn't very long.
Well, we don't know, that's, that's, yeah, we don't know, we just, we just, just, oh, we just signed up to support it.
I'll, I'll, uh, I'll second, uh, David's.
Do you wanna say that a bit?
Sorry, I'll second, okay.
You're right. Um, okay, so it's moved and seconded. Um, all those in favour?
So to sign up, to support it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to ask what you want.
Yeah, and what do you want.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that's unanimous.
Sorry, I did say, great.
Okay. Uh, item number sixteen, Ribble Rivers Trust Tree Planting Initiative, that's really wordy, uh, to consider the council taking part in the Ribble Rivers Tree Planting Initiative. Uh, councillor Whit, you indicated?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, this was, um, publicised the, last week in, um, uh, the, the local, well, online media and, uh, I, uh, contacted the Ribble Rivers Trust to find out more details and they have provided me with the prospectus, uh, of what they're doing. They are currently looking to get, um, uh, significant sponsorship from, uh, commercial interests and they're, they're, they're not able to, um, share that really because I don't think they've got a, signed up or, you know, looking at some large things. I, I really don't know. Um, so the, the, the financial detail underlying this, I, I can't really speak to, but, uh, the basic concept is that a ten-year programme of very significant tree planting within the wider Ribble River basin and all the Hinsland, which of course most of Barnoldswick feeds into, into the ribble. And, um, in the first years, they'll be dependent on getting money from sponsors, getting money from local councils and, uh, other organisations. Uh, and I can mention that this afternoon, Barnoldswick in Bloom agreed to, um, uh, run, uh, a, a, a thousand pounds, uh, towards the project. Uh, and over that ten-year period, that there would be, you know, hundreds of thousands, millions of trees planted within the catchment, uh, of the ribble. Uh, that would help, uh, mitigate against the climate crisis, uh, by carbon capture. It would, uh, help alleviate flooding by natural flood management, uh, measures and it would help increase river cleanliness, uh, by, uh, less nitrogen getting into the rivers and, um, uh, cleaning off the, the wild line. So it's a great good do, as you might say. Um, I, I mean, I would very much like Barnoldswick Town Council to, uh, to play a positive role in this. Uh, you yourself, Chairman, have been exploring the virtues of tree planting. Uh, I think, you know, we could fit hand in glove with this initiative. Um, perhaps not for this tree planting session, but certainly for tree planting sessions in the future. So, I mean, subject to what people said tonight, I, I think the town council needs to ask more questions and say to Ribble Rivers Trust, how can we as a town council get involved? Uh, I think we perhaps ought to be prepared to put our hand in this pocket and put some money into it, um, uh, when we know more about it next year. And, uh, the, uh, ultimately, we hope to be open to have, uh, some of the trees that have been planted in part of the initiative, on some of the land that we now own as owners of the parks or land that might come into our ownership, um, uh, due to further community asset transfers in the near future. So, that's my lot to, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Jen?
Okay. So that was my question really, um, on how will we be involved with that? Um, I did look on the map just to see where the ribble meandered and it sort of goes north of Gisborne and I didn't know how we'd come into play with that, if we are gonna be planting it alongside of the River Ribble. But if, if there's...
Chairman, the, the catchment of the ribble, um, as far as we're concerned, it begins, uh, at the brow of the road as you go up towards West Haven High School. So I'm looking through the wall, up Calvert Road and it rises up and where you go over that little brown there and then it starts to drop down, that's the watershed. That's the watershed between, uh, the land that drains into the Irish Sea or the land that drains into the North Sea via the air. And then the, so Barnoldswick literally sits on that watershed. So the catchment of the ribble, um, is in... So the catchment of the Ribble um is in Bonnowswick. Um, and part of the, the catchment of the air is in Bonnowswick as well.
Yeah, okay.
So they're not planting alongside the Ribble, just, yeah, they are planting alongside bex and.
I wasn't aware of the bed planted, it was just a third.
There's, there's hu- you know, hundreds of acres of oak land that may be planted. Um, it's the whole catchment uh which includes us.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we've got a mover. Uh, Jane, will you second in that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, all those in favour then? Uh, that's unanimous, thank you.
What, what were you thinking about, sorry?
Uh, providing out the votes.
Yes, um, yes.
Finding out, you know, how that's spoken. Okay, uh, item seventeen then, uh, heritage project, Letcliffe Park and area adjacent to park on Manchester Road. To consider a heritage project covering Letcliffe Park and the adjacent area on Manchester Road.
I was gonna say, which area?
Uh, well, chairman, I mean, this sort of wraps two or three issues up in a, in, in a bundle. And uh, first of all, Letcliffe Park itself. The town council took ownership of the park last year, was it, the year before? And uh, the town council has an aspiration to maintain the park at the highest standard than it, 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 it has enjoyed for the last few years. Um, and one of the things that we've done is get the sculptures into the park so that there's more reason why people visit it and it will become busier. Um, one of the things that is uh, uh, a downside of the park is the accumulated neglect over a period of decades, where there's quite a lot of the historic features uh that have been become covered in uh ivy and uh overgrowth, undergrowth, whichever way you say. And the historical significance of the park um isn't obvious to everybody. So we, we, um, several of us have been up in the park uh during the installation of the sculptures and leading up to that. And we've discussed the park with uh a lot of park users. And um I could stand up there all day and wax lyrical about the borehole cause, or I could bore all day about the borehole cause. And um, uh, there's, uh, Tom and I have been, have been captured up having fragments of borehole uh there are up there. Um, and I can see people who could miss it, but you don't need to tell you the story now.
I can tell you.
Not in, not in this discussion, please.
I never want to walk up there and explain it.
I want to go home tonight.
So, so the, 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 the his- history of the park isn't something that's self-evident. And a lot of people who use the park on a daily basis don't have a clue what it's all about. So the heritage um is, is not in danger of being lost, but it's not evident. And so, you know, we can do a lot with that. Also, the, and we've discussed about this in an earlier item uh from the General Purposes Committee, uh about the, the, the standard of maintenance. Uh, you know, some of the paths are very slippery. Um, we could do with some short-term measures to make them less slippery. But ultimately, we've got that set paved path that runs up uh from the bottom entrance up to the top of the park, which is generally overgrown in summer, probably impassable because of that. And during the winter, I would go down it because you'd slip, you'd go head over heels uh because it's so slippery. So there's lots of little things that you could pull together, both to make the park better and improve people's understanding of the park. Um, an issue related to the park on Tiana, Tiana Adams, who was a councillor in the last council. Uh, one of her ambitions was to achieve better pedestrian access to the park. Currently, if you want to get to the park on foot, unless you come up King Hill uh or perhaps come along from Hodge Lane, you have to brave a narrow section of Manchester Road where there isn't a footpath. And Tiana's ambition was to try and have a footpath that ran along the field side of the henge going up Manchester Road from where there is a pavement. Uh, and then to be able to access the park uh by a swift crossing of Manchester Road, rather than trying to hide behind the bushes as traffic whizzed past you at forty miles an hour, a work speed, people come down. And then the final thing, and coming to the an- uh question uh that my ask was about, what bit of land adjacent to the park? Um, and this is an area called Poorbones. And Poorbones was where people who were in the workhouse um some time ago used to be sent to um uh break stone for the highways. So before the, the highways were all tarmac and uh, uh, you know, as they are, well, I was gonna say as they are now, but to be honest, some of them are getting it back as well. But part of, part of the maintenance is that people who were um getting assistance, poor assistance, were required to, to work on projects like breaking stone that was then used to um fill the potholes. And I know we, we don't think about getting those times again. But um that little area called Poorbones has been uh forgotten and neglected for generations now. Still there, uh, still has a wall round it, uh, but it's isolated on a, uh, a nasty bit of road that we don't really want to walk up to. So um my head was thinking about Letcliffe Park. Uh, Tiana has been asking for this uh pavement improvement. And I wondered whether we could link it all together to get a footpath running uh on the field side of the henge up Manchester Road, which would access Poorbones, incidentally is a lovely viewpoint if you go in there and uh look out over the town, uh but also access Letcliffe Park. And then the project would encompass uh, uh celebrating the heritage and history of the park and uh the part that the park has played in the life of Bonnowswick for um well, well over a century now. You go back to eighteen ninety since it, it uh came into being. So chairman, I've been doing a very cursory look on Kirsty's advice uh at what might be available. There are programmes within the Heritage Lottery Fund which may assist us in doing a super duper job. And uh in the first instance, I, I think what we ought to be doing is just sort of work up the idea a little bit and then ask if we can discuss it with someone from the Heritage Lottery Fund uh to see if they think it's a runner and take their advices, how we might take the project forward. I think, as, as a town council, if we're serious about uh making major improvements to our parks, uh we need to attract external funding. And I think in terms of Letcliffe Park and poor old Poorbones, this might be an opportunity for us to. Might all come to nothing, but I think it's worth putting some work into it.
Okay, councillor Ross, how about that?
I just wanted to say that at the moment, the Heritage Lottery Fund has nature as a priority in the north. So it's also a really good timing to start approaching them about parks. So I just wanted to add that point, make sense to do it, right?
Okay, councillor Mills?
Um, I, I just um really second what David's saying there. Um, when you do go to that, it's a bit like the, the bad relation, isn't it? You know, most of the funding is sort of works putting around about town. And it would be lovely to see much of a vast improvement up there, to re- rediscover this heritage that we've got. And um, you know, I think it would be a really good, good thing to, to move forward with.
Okay, um, so do you have a, a motion?
Well, my proposal is that um, uh, we, we put um tentative proposals uh on paper so that we work it up a little bit from the sort of sketch that I've just outlined. And we invite or we request, or we ask somebody from the Heritage Lottery Fund and advisor um to meet with us to discuss whether um the project's got length um and whether we should go to um the, you know, a formal bid uh for funding. Um, I mean, depending on what threshold we, we go for, uh, you know, the next stage could be an expression of interest. So, you know, you work it up to a next level and then they say yeah or no, and then you do a formal bid. Um, uh, I mean, depending on the level of funding that we'd want to go for, um, you know, you can get some grant aid towards working up your, your final proposals. But that's when you get into the multimillion pounds and I suspect we're probably not going to get into that bucket.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Kirsty, are you second in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, all those in favour then? Uh, that's unanimous, thank you. Uh, last page then. Item eighteen, Victory Park. Uh, to consider management of the undrained area adjacent to the rugby pitch, Victory Park and other options to diversify planting in the park. Um, so the reason for this item is because we were approached by a botanist who had a look round Victory Park and was looking for ways that we could diversify uh the biosphere sort of in the park. And uh there was, there was three main suggestions. And one of the main ones was making a, a, a wet area near the rugby pitch where, where it's already boggy. And it would be introducing uh plants that are, um, what's the word? Proper for that area.
Boggy.
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 Wetter than the rocks.
Wetter than the rocks. Um, yeah. Um, so I think really what the motion should be is that we uh agree to this, this botanist um to, to do, to, to provide us with what we should be planting up and uh, and to advise us in that way and then for us to implement a scheme, really.
Uh, the, the botanist, you mean, you mean he's gonna offer suggestions to what we, what we should be doing?
That's very presumptuous of you. Um, the botanist is actually a female. And so you cut out that one, so I'll hold it against you.
I'll rephrase that, uh, chairman, to they will provide suggestions rather than actually doing anything in, in, in the first instance.
Okay, um. Uh, yeah, thank you chairman. I mean, this was your suggestion in the first place about um, uh, trying to move Victory Park away from being a green desert. Um, yeah, those acres of green grass provide a true little uh benefit for, for wildlife. And uh, it, you know, it's quite an arid environment for a, a lot of creatures. So, uh, you know, diversifying the, the flora and the fauna is, is, is very valuable in terms of um uh sustaining wildlife, making sure we've got pollinated in the future and all that. Um, uh, I think the botanist in question, uh, as well as the, the bog, um, was also looking at the, the banking on the, if I say the far side of the rugby pitch area. So there's a, a slope where the, the drumline was excavated to, to metal level playing field. Um, and she thinks that there is uh some value in encouraging the diversity on that banking. Uh, and then uh, uh, the chairman has been uh pushing for uh more appropriate or tree planting of an appropriate nature. Uh, and finally, there's a suggestion that we could uh increase the diversity along the uh head, the bank of stock beck so that um, uh, you know, there was a, a bit more than, than the green grass. Chairman, uh, the Bloom Group has discussed this and are supportive of the initiative. Uh, I think the Bloom Group are expecting the town council to take the lead. Uh, you know, in agreeing what sort of work might be done. And um, the botanist is willing to come and visit and have a, a site, a site visit to, to discuss the, her proposals in greater detail. So we've got an idea of, of exactly what the implications would be.
Kirsty?
Can we just ask if there's a way that it could be explained or communicated to you from the park? If we think about that longer term, so if we're making these changes, is there a way we can say this is to try and increase wildlife? Or, or something so people understand why the changes are happening? Or we're hoping by doing this, we're gonna get more hedge jobs or whatever it might be? You know, so actually people can see if they walk around. Can we think about how we do that? If there's, it might be too expensive, but can we think about this?
I think that's for later on when we agree what we're actually gonna do. We think about what we're going to do first and figure that out then. I, I agree with you, but I just think it's for.
I thought we were approving them to go ahead.
I, I think the initial step, chairman, is um meet with, uh, I, I wouldn't say a name, I'm frightened to do so now because.
The G D B R?
Chairman, G D B R meeting. Um, Alison Blackett, I mean, uh, the botanist. And uh, you know, find out, you know, just what it involves. And then uh if we can do that before the next G P meeting, we can have a discussion about, you know, actually it's this, this and this. Um, some of it might take some time to implement and other, other things we might else do straight away. Uh, but it, you know, it's general, I think we should agree the general principle of uh increasing the diversity in the park. And uh, you know, without necessarily affecting uh all the users. I don't think anybody's suggesting we plough up the football pitches. Well, actually, that might be a good idea. Ooh, um, yeah, nobody's suggesting plowing up the football pitches. It's the periphery, the perimeter and things like that. The, the one, chairman, the one uh issue that there is, is uh we need to have in mind that uh we had designated uh the bog area as part of the dog exercise area. And the intention was to fence it off so that there was an area that uh dogs could be exercised without being on a lead. Uh, as we have at Letcliffe Park. If, and, and as part of that, the town council had said it could look at improving the drainage so that it was actually a usable area that everybody would come into us and saying that the, the golden Labrador ended up with chocolate Labrador. Um, so we, we need to, you know, sort of bear that in mind in developing the schemes. And it may be that if when we do fence off an area for dogs to be exercised, that we exclude the boggy area because no point creating bog plants and then draining it and there aren't any bogs for the plants to grow on.
Okay, um, so, all those in favour? Unanimous, um. Item nineteen, buts coming in. Item nineteen, Boots Clinic.
I just said, it's kind of quite absolute record, it's absolutely freezing here.
It is actually, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, Chairman, but in all the setting up before the meeting, I didn't go down and put the heater on for another two hours.
Could have closed the door as well as long.
You know. I'm not going to put it like that 'cause it's too late.
Yeah, there's, come on, there's, there's two items left and one of them we don't even have discussion.
Here we go.
Yeah. Um, okay, Boots Clinic, to consider response to the temporary closure of Boots Clinic and decision to move services to Colne Health Centre for a minimum of four weeks.
I was hoping I didn't have to leave on this touch, um, um.
Your mate, it.
Yes.
Go on. Um, so we found out in a, a Lancashire Telegraph article, I think it was, uh, that Boots Clinic had been closed because of a leak in the roof to make, and it made the building unfit. Um, it was a bit confusing 'cause the article in question had this building pictured at the top of the article, so. Um, but most of the clinical services have been relocated to this building. The ones that weren't relocated here have been moved to Colne. Um, and, I mean, that, that's the position we're in, really. Uh, Kirsty?
I don't, aren't some of them there?
Yeah.
Some of them are still up there from there.
That's still very good, yeah.
Okay, so, some of them are still there.
Chair, the, the, the midwives are still there.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike?
Can I just ask, I have seen quite a lot over Boots Clinic recently. What is the state of that building at night? It's been beaten, so it's, I, I don't.
Practically derelict. It's not that bad.
And what's the plans? Right, what's the plans?
It needs knocking down and rebuilding. Which, um, yeah, we, we need a new health centre for Bonn, Alswit, really. Uh, it's not a suitable building for, for what it should be used for. Uh, I mean, that almost came to pass, not really. Uh, we almost had.
We almost had a meeting?
Uh, yeah.
A meeting?
No.
Do we have any plans to box it, do we have any, in, in the space of making it functional, usable, fit for purpose?
It's, it's not our place to say it, really. It's the C C G's or whoever owns that particular building. No, it's N H S.
Estates.
Estates, okay. That's my word.
Yeah, I mean, part of the problem, Chairman, is that the N H S is spitting to all these little bits. And the Clinical Commissioning Group, which is a body that commissions work, um, pays for people to do things, don't have any capital, they don't have any buildings. Um, they pay all the parts of the N H S to pro- or increasingly not the N H S to provide the service. And as somebody said over there, the Boots Clinic itself is owned by, uh, N H S Estates, which is one of empty companies that, that make it all up. Um, there are probably, or there were, four or maybe five service providers that provide different clinic, uh, book, uh, clinics at Boots Clinic or used to provide different clinics. Um, uh, the iconic is up here. When the treatment room moved out of the surgery, that came in here. Uh, there are another two clinics that come in here now. Uh, Podiatry was at Boots and they're going to Colne. So people with foot problems got to walk all the way to Colne to get, sorry. Well, the diabetic eye can it, uh, is, is it, no, it's in here, some of it. Yeah.
Is this ever moved back?
Uh, so it, it's a mess and you, you can't get hold of it and sort of talk to anybody sensible. Um, uh, we've campaigned, you know, as a town council, uh, as individuals, as councillors on, uh, Pendle Council and County Council, we've campaigned for a new health centre. We were encouraged last year when, uh, the Clinical Commissioning Group, uh, who don't have any capital to invest in buildings, but, you know, they can sort of chive away at the people. They commissioned a feasibility study into a health centre. But the, uh, the feasibility, well, if, if there was a report, we never saw it. And, um, uh, effectively, it, it was because the, the G P surgery, uh, couldn't see how they would make it stack up. Uh, their problems are more about a lack of G Ps, there aren't enough G Ps and they can't recruit G Ps. Um, so they're more concerned about that than the state of their building, which is, it's okay, but it's pretty inaccessible to anybody with mobility, uh, handicaps. So there, there's a big mess and, and the sensible thing as far as we could see was have a, a new health centre which would provide all the services that we should be providing in Bonn, Alswit and combine the G P surgery with the providers of clinics that, uh, uh, either have been or currently at Boots Clinic. And then out of the blue, lo and behold, this building that's been, it, it's a lovely building inside, but it, it's well past its sell-by date and it has a rotten asbestos roof. Um, and lo and behold, over Christmas, there's a re- a leak in the roof. Um, and part of the building is, is, um, full of water. So, you know, what the N H S are going to do about it, who knows? Are they going to put a new roof on a building that's cracked out? Uh, are they going to say, okay, we accept that we need to create a new building? Will that building include G Ps? It, you know, it's awful. From Pendle Council's area committee, uh, we've called for a meeting with the C C G. Uh, so, uh, I mean, I would suggest that the town council, you know, took courses of action. We, we, we express our concern at the abrupt termination of Bonn, Alswit based services at Boots Clinic. Um, and, uh, you know, as a consequence of the condition of the building. And secondly, uh, we ask to be included with the, uh, Pendle Council in any meetings that there are with the C C G, uh, to discuss the future of healthcare provision in, in Bonn, Alswit. I say meetings with the C C G 'cause they're the only people you can get hold of. Um, you know, the rest of them, they're miles away or they're up in the ivory towers and, you, you know, there's no discussion to them. So that's my suggestion would be.
Uh, councillor Rose Parker, did you indicate?
No.
No.
Uh.
Michael.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. We did, uh, meet with them last year and we were supposed to meet with them again in June last year, but nothing came about, did it? But the, um, the clinic, um, Podiatry is the only one that was down there and you couldn't get in. I had to go to, um, what do they call it, Yaris Fingers when I had bad cholelans on my toes. And I know Ken had to go down there, uh, and his, his legal bandage, though. We mentioned all that when we saw them. And, and like, like Emma with the diabetic eye, Kenny, you've got to go to Colne now because they don't, they don't do it at, uh, at Boots anymore. They've stopped doing it from last year. I think you went to Colne, didn't you? Yeah, I had to go to Colne as well. So it's all the travelling around that we do need something. So we, we don't just need it for us, we need it for people in Navy as well, don't we? West Graven completely, really, you know, so, but they, they're just not bothered with us at the moment. But we do need something, do we? Definitely.
Are you seconded?
Yeah, I second what David said, definitely.
It's first one, so a cancellation of the clinics at Walsass Pendle Council to be included and used with C C G at Boots.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, uh, all those in favour? Unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, that concludes all the discussion items. Uh, finally, on the agenda tonight, we have items for correspondence, information online.
We've been asked if we want to join a rural market towns group of rural services network. The man, the man was like.
Is there a cost?
Uh, yes, uh, it, it was. Uh, what's our population? Shall we count the type?
Uh, oh, ten.
All right, I wonder if you can count here. That's fine.
Is, is there any more correspondence?
No, that's it.
Uh, so I thank everybody for, for coming tonight. I wish you all safe journey home. Uh, I will ask.